Here.
And we're live.
All right, welcome to the planning board meeting for December 16th. I'll begin with the roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio.
Here.
And Gardner is absent. Tanya Hartford.
Here.
Leah McGovern. Leah.
Sorry.
Is, okay. Rick Tainter is absent. MJ, there. Okay. Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here, as is Linda Guthrie, our note taker. Andy Port. And Caitlin Sullivan from the planning office. I will review the agenda first. 177 State Street Minor Site Plan Review, continued from November 18th. Request for a minor modification at 102104 High Street, continued from November 18th. We're going to take something out of order as our third item, request for minor modification, 47 Story Ave., which is continued from December 2nd. Then we'll consider a request for release of covenant at the Reserve at Bashaw Farm. Afterward, a request for minor modification at the Colby Farm OSRD subdivision. That is also the Reserve at Bashaw Farm. And finally, we'll consider a request for a minor modification at One Boston Way. Following that, we'll approve minutes from December 2nd and have any other zoning or update discussions before we close out. For anybody who in the public is listening for the first time, I'd like to let you know that the documents that we're going to be discussing will, are on the website for tonight's meeting. Director Port will also pull up the relevant ones as we need to discuss them. But you can go to the website and under Government, click on Planning Board, where you can see the link to the agenda for tonight's meeting. And there you'll find a link to each application on the agenda and all the supporting materials. And also note that the most recent documents are at the bottom of the list. So we will begin the meeting with our first agenda item, 177 State Street Minor Site Plan Review, which is a continuance from previous discussion. I don't believe the applicant is here. Is that correct, Andy?
No, we have Tony here this evening.
Okay, so do you want to, um, oh. Fine, do you want to, um, kind of bring us up to speed on this from the last time we heard about it? And then have, have him speak to anything that needs to be spoken to?
Yeah, sure. So I'll pull up the relevant site plan. As you know, it's a small portion of the project that's actually in the city of Newburyport. Oh, sorry, I'm, sorry, I'm mixing up our agenda here. Sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, I thought you were. No, there's no Tony on this one. There's just you and Caitlin. Okay.
No, I'm sorry. So this particular project, the last issue that the planning board had with it when the applicant was sent back for continuance was the landscaping. So there were some modifications done to the application.
Wait a minute, Andy. We're talking about 177 State Street, the parking on the old, this is the, the site.
Am I mistaken? I thought you wanted to take up 47th Story Avenue first. It was.
No, no, no. We're not there yet. No, we're going to take that after 102104 High Street.
Okay, all right. So bottom line here, the, again, apologies. The site plan that we're looking at is for the 177 State Street application. As you can see in the sketch here, there's a very small portion of the project that actually falls in the city of Newburyport. The rest of it is in the town of Newbury. So we have our typical stormwater review type issues. I think John Eric White, the city engineer, expressed that he did not have any concerns regarding the portion in Newburyport that there's drainage pullback, you know, going into the town of Newbury. So it doesn't really become an issue for us. But there was an issue raised by the water department and bottom line is the office recommends in order to address that concern, given that they still have permitting to finish in the town of Newbury, that the planning board granted continuance for the applicant here so that they can look into that issue a little further. What the water department had asked for, and we're recommending the planning board do consistent with that request is require a peer review of the applicant's plans here with respect to LSP workers, licensed site professional work. Because of some contaminated soils, the water department was concerned that not only during construction, but potentially later, should there be any leaks and things like that, I guess, that some contaminants might make its way into the city's water supply, at least the nearby lines. So in order to address that concern, they had a couple of particular questions that could be answered. I guess what seems most efficient from the office's perspective is to grant the continuance, have the consultant pay the peer review funds under 4453G. Have that peer review provided to the planning board, to the applicant, to the water department, and hopefully confirm that everything is copacetic. And if it's not, come to some resolution as to how the issues could be addressed to satisfy the water department's concerns. You know, pending the, you know, resolution of that particular issue, we have no other concerns with this particular application, given the small portion that's in the city of Newburyport. But there is the rest of the the application that the applicant could review for you. And, and, you know, they were not planning on being here tonight because of the timeframe they knew that was required to do this peer review. So we were expecting, based on the office's recommendations, the board would take the vote to do that. And then we could look at this project again essentially in January.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
So to be clear, are we asking or moving a continuous for January 6th or January 20th, please? And I just mentioned that because January 6th may be the IFS.
We're actually going to go to February 3rd because of the amount of work that has to be done. We'll solve that problem very easily.
Bonnie, this is Tanya. I'm confused though. Wasn't there, I saw a letter from ransom engineering saying that there was no, there was going to be no issue. So I'm trying to figure out why there's still an issue because this doesn't seem like, this doesn't seem like an issue to me.
Andy, you want to respond, please?
Yeah, again, from what we know, that's the applicant's consultant. And what the water department had asked for was for a peer review of that element. Again, it's not an area we have expertise in. And the water department, I guess, does not have a licensed site professional and staff either. So they did see that material. That was part of what was distributed to the various departments for comment and review. But they still had concerns, so.
Andy, and just, just to, I'm sorry, just to be clear too, I just, I still am curious sort of is, isn't that why, why this is a site plan review issue where this would be, to me, this seems like this would be something that would be a DEP regulatory issue through, through the Department of Environmental Protection. So why are we holding up the applicant for the?
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. And I did ask, I did raise that question to the water department, saying, you know, this isn't typical for us to look into these issues as part of site plan review, given that they're typically handled under the MCP and so forth. And again, the water department expressed concern that because the planning board has the site plan review authority and looks at, you know, the site details, utilities and so forth. This part of that, because it's the city's water supply, their concern there was that the planning board has the ability to have that looked into in a peer review basis locally, given it's the city's water supply. I don't want to speak, you know, on their behalf, it's their concern. But, but their concern was that this is the only point where this, the city can have a proper peer review of that. You know, again, at the applicant's expense, given that, you know, that there's an issue that's potentially being created on site by the applicant, by this project. So again, they knew of some contaminants, I guess, on this site, the history, some history of the site. And they raised that concern that in addition to or as a belt and suspender, so to speak, that they not just rely upon DP, so.
I just, I think that it's, I'm just going to say, for me, I would be frustrated if I was the applicant that, that, that they submitted this back in September. Is that right? And, and that, again, this is something that's, that's not typically looked at under site plan review. I just feel like it's an undue burden on the applicant, especially because it's such a small portion. That's in Newburyport. But that being said, if the applicant's willing to do the peer review and they are still going through review in Newbury, I, I don't, it seems like in some ways, you know, I guess we would just, just ask for that, give them that continuance. But I want to just express that I, I don't, I don't know that I, I want to have this be a practice for ours.
Is it true, Andy, that they, well, actually, the question is more, where are they in their review process with Newbury? Just to get a sense of how much we might be holding them up. I wasn't under the impression that they had moved very far with their.
Yeah, I'm not sure they've even gotten to the hearing there. Caitlin may know better than I do because we've had some exchanges with Martha Taylor about the timing. But I'm not sure they've even made it to the board yet. They certainly haven't gotten approved. Caitlin, do you have any better idea of the, the timing for their hearing?
I know, like you just said, you know, they haven't been approved. The applicant certainly doesn't have any, they haven't expressed any concerns with going through this peer review, and they have not indicated that this is holding them up in any way.
Okay, so I hear your concern, Tanya, that we may be overstepping and possibly holding them up because of that. But in this case, it looks like we aren't. And as long as it's under our purview, we might as well keep it local. And this has been a site that was very hard to develop anyway. It's been a brown field for a very long time. I think some cleanup has gone on there, Andy, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's my understanding that it's a partial cleanup. And so that was again, part of the concern the water department had, I guess, was just that it wasn't a completely clean site. Again, we don't, we're not LSPs. We don't know the nature of their concerns, other than what they've told us. But, but there is some history there, like you said, Bonnie.
Yes, circle finishing was there, and it was a contaminated site when they closed.
But they, but we did get a letter from ransom, that from their LSP, a respected LSP, who was licensed under the state. It's, you know, we have a privatized, you know, system here in Massachusetts that shows that, you know, if the LSP says that it's, it's okay, then that's, that's, they're putting their license on the line to say that. So again, if we want to peer review it, it's fine. I just, I personally feel like that's, that's another layer of undue burden and cost, quite frankly, on the applicant. And so that was, I just wanted to express that.
Thank you.
Subject to any further comments, and I'll reserve commentary with respect to applicability of this for any and all other future applications. I'd like to move to continue to February 3rd, 2021.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we got Don and Leah, and I will call, roll.
Bonnie, may I make a request?
Yes.
Just for clarity on the record, if the board is requiring the peer review, I think it would make sense to do that before the, you know, the continuance. Just, and also, again, if the board wants to do that, that's up to the board. We understand Tanya's concerns. We're just passing on what the water department had. But if, I would suggest that you clarify that as well before the continuance.
So you want to?
I'd like to, Bonnie, with your permission and concurrence, I'd like to retract what I just said in first, unless we can use it a conjunctive with, with both motions, I'd like to make a motion to approve an independent consultant for the city of Newburyport to review the application.
And you can include that, the minor site plan review.
And, and, and a minor site plan review would be continued to February 3rd, 2021.
Great, okay. And we have a second from?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is that, is that it? Andy, is that what you wanted?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So we'll take a vote. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Can I approve the continuance and not approve the peer review? I'll just say yes, that's fine.
You can, you can just say no, it's, it's all right. What do you want? What's your vote?
It's, it's fine. I will say yes, that's fine.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay. The second item on our agenda is 102104 High Street, request for minor modification, which is a continuance. We've had a review from our peer reviewer, Phil Christensen, who effectively, said effectively, the amount of impervious surface in this paving of this parking area behind the condo association building is not any, much more impervious than what's already there because of the compactness of the surface right now. And he also agreed with John Eric from DPS that the combination of vegetation and depressed, calls it depressed swales, will be effective as stormwater. Okay. There is some concern from the planning office that the site plan approved for this site doesn't match what they are proposing in the minor modification as the area that will be paved for parking. And so we want to take a little more look at how that space is being used for parking right now. And I believe there's a representative of the, of the condo association here, Mr. Welch, is that correct?
Yes, Bill Welch. Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, great. Would you help us understand where everybody parks? And maybe Andy afterward, or in conjunction with what you have to say, can show us the current site plan? And what is being proposed?
And just for clarity for everyone, this is Andy. On the screen, I have the exclusive use areas shown from the condo association documents. I think that might be useful for explaining how the parking is arranged. The concern that was raised by the office was one that Jennifer Blancher, our zoning administrator, had noted, which was while we were confirming that the stormwater was not going to be an issue, given the increase of pavement and previous service on this approval, which now seems to be in order, per the peer review. She had noted there was a discrepancy where there are cars essentially parked in an area that was not originally part of the approval of the board had granted. So she just wanted to make sure the board is aware of that. And if it made sense to modify the plan accordingly, or to pull back what is being used for parking, she just wanted to raise that concern for the board and for the applicant to address.
Okay, so Mr. Welch, could you walk us through where everybody parks now?
Yeah, well, sure. Where the, the image that's on the screen right now is parking for five of the six unit owners at 102104 High Street. The owners of Unit A actually park a driveway on the side of the building that fronts High Street. So what you're looking at is essentially the parking area for five unit owners, each of whom have at least two spaces per unit. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I think in the course of considering our request, I mean, after having a few conversations with Caitlin, who's been a great assistance to me through this process, I just want to, I think the main point I'd like to make here tonight is that the existing dirt and gravel surface of our parking area was installed by the builder, developer, who renovated our building in 2017, 2018. It wasn't installed by the condo unit owners or the homeowners association. The surface and size of a parking area that you're looking at right now, that Mr. Port put up on the screen, is what every one of the six unit owners, including me, inherited from the builder when we purchased our units, either in late 2018 or in my case, last year. We've not done anything to the surface or the size of the parking area since we became owners. But after living here a year or so, we've all seen the steady disintegration and erosion of the existing surface of our area, which is being washed away with every rainstorm and plowed away with every snowstorm on and down Otis Place, which with the forecast that we're looking at here will happen again tonight and probably throughout tomorrow. The surface of our parking area that you're looking at now was marketed as a gravel surface and so is a gravel surface, which is what's shown on the site plan that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And the plan that we used and submitted to the board showing only a simple change in the word gravel to asphalt to depict the area that we'd like to improve. To my knowledge, no unit owner, including me, was aware of a site plan that is different than the one that was recorded. And that we were shown as buyers of our units, which again, you're looking at right now. Certainly, we weren't aware of the quote unquote existing conditions site plan that we've since come to learn is a part of a special permit approval back in April or May of 2018 that involved the replacement and restoration of windows in our beautiful old historic building. As to why the surface of our parking area is now all gravel, as shown on recorded site plan and that you're looking at now, and the, and why the other plan shows a combination of gravel, parking and weeds, as it's described. All I can say is that when I spoke to the builder about the difference a week or so ago, he told me that it was his decision to install all gravel in the parking area. And that, as he recalls, there was no discussion or requirement to keep or maintain the gravel and weed surface as part of his renovation of the building. So therefore, that's what he went forward with and sold to all of us who reside at 102104 High Street. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, I'm going to go back to Andy. Yes, thank you for your explanation. Andy, what is the difference between the proposed site plan and the, and the one that was approved?
Yeah, so I know Caitlin and Jennifer had some discussion about this. I tried to just throw up a red box a moment ago. I can, I'll pull it up again. Bottom line is, it looks like the area, as the applicant mentioned, the area that's labeled as weeds, that a portion of that, if you look at, I'll show the two plans. So right now, I'm showing where the area is. And it's labeled as weeds, as he indicated on the original site plan that was referenced in the application by the developer. And then what we have today is the exclusive use parking areas cover a portion of that area. And so Jennifer, in her due diligence, looking at, to see whether things were in compliance and then how this needs to be permitted, had noted the discrepancy in these two and felt that it should be somehow rectified in the records. Either to satisfy the planning board in terms of the scope of what was originally approved and how that might potentially impact the Butters who weren't given notice, let's say, of, of an area that was going to be used for parking instead of landscaping. And also for the applicants and the other association members that may want to make sure that the, the records are clear about what has been approved for this particular property in the future. You know, as far as compliance with permits and the zoning ordinance. I'll show the other plan in just a moment, so you can see where this overlaps with some parking spaces today. I think that's the essence of her concern.
Well, where would those people have parked if they didn't park there?
Yeah, can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so as, as I understand, the building that we now live in, which is now six condos, prior to its purchase and renovation by the builder, was an apartment house that was home to about 10 units. And the, there, there's, it appears that many, or if not most of the tenants of the apartment building parked in the back of the building on an area that I, that the builder told me, which is marked weeds on that existing conditions plan, but essentially was a combination of grass and weeds and then gravel. So I think that it's always been a parking area for originally apartment dwellers. Now, you know, now, as I mentioned earlier, condo owners.
I didn't mean to take this over, planning board members, please speak up. And does anybody have any comments?
Yeah, this is, Don, I'd like to ask. I think one of the questions on the table, and it may not be a significant question, is, is if in fact, this is a minor modification, because if it's not, then, you know, we need to notice this and, and get public input on this. I mentioned this because of the commentary, and understandably so, about parking. And it seems to me it's, it's a bit of dichotomy with respect to there were, if there was lands, if there was grass, et cetera, and not that one could not park on the grass, it may lead to residents or occupants of, of, of this premise. Parking on the street, which may exacerbate, which may exacerbate the current situation. So I don't necessarily have a firm opinion. In fact, if anything, I'm leaning towards that it is a minor modification, but I would just, I wanted to throw this out to see if any of my fellow planning board members had had any thoughts in this at all, or if not, we'll just continue to have discussion as a minor modification without public input. Or without public notice, pardon me.
Is, Billy, could I jump in or should I wait?
Let's see what other planning board members think about this minor versus major issue. Anyone else?
I see it as a made, a minor modification. I mean, it's, it sounds like it's always been parked on. It's just sort of a codifying of existing conditions, is what it sounds like to me.
Anyone else?
I would agree with Leah, yeah. Especially because from the engineers, the idea of switching it from the gravel to the asphalt seems okay as well. I'm, I'm fine with it being minor.
Yeah, I agree as well.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm, I'm the same. Yeah, I would, I would say it's minor. I have no problem.
Good, I agree. So back to the content of this being paved over, even the part that's identified as weeds on the original site plan. Does anyone have a problem with that or a concern or somewhat want to? Any clarification on that?
Well, if it were me, if I lived here, I would prefer to have some greenery mixed in with all the paving, but maybe that's too expensive and too much to ask. I don't know.
Well, there will be greenery as part of the stormwater management along the side in the, when you're looking at here on the left-hand side. And around the corner.
Fix.
Yeah. It'll actually be on two sides, plus some addition on the third side, right at the corner, as Otis Place comes into it. Which looks to me like it might even be conducive to obstructing people who might miss all the signs that tell them that this is a dead end and end up turning around in this area, which is, could only be a good thing for the residents. Other comments?
This is Billy Welch. Could I speak again or?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, I agree with what you just said, Bonnie. As you know, we've had an ongoing problem with people coming up Otis Place, usually unaware that it's a dead end street and using our parking area as a turnaround spot, whether it's a passenger vehicles or pretty large commercial trucks, which is contributing to the disintegration and erosion of the surface that's there now. And in, in, and we've, as we've considered or contemplated what to do and how to improve what we have in the back, we approached a couple of our neighbors, Director Butters with us, and they both are in favor of what we're trying to do here, especially the neighbor on to our left as you exit the property, who is, has been unfortunately, the recipient of a lot of the dirt and gravel that runs off our driveway now, or parking area is deposited in front of our home. And so what we've tried to do with this proposal is to kind of be a, kind of our version of a good neighbor policy by trying to eliminate the deposits of that, the debris in front of our home, as well as the home on the right side as you exit the property. And, and so doing, you know, be a good neighbor. And I think the neighbor might be on the line as, or in the call as well tonight. I'm not sure if she would like to say anything in support of what we're doing here, but they, they, when we filed our request this, the summer, she and other members of our family signed a form or submitted a form supporting our proposal, as did the neighbor across the street, who again, are Director Butters. So in any, in any event, the greenery that we've got proposed will help, help to green up the space. And as I think Mr. White said in his email, supporting our proposal, I think the word he used will help liven up the space. And it will do that most definitely, as well as help mitigate some of the water runoff in the future, as opposed to what we have now is that dirt and gravel runoff. I think that's all I have for the moment.
Okay, that's good explanation. Thank you. Just to your point about other people speaking on a minor modification, we don't generally take public comment. And as we have on record, those letters, which we already considered at a, at a prior meeting, I think we'll. I think we'll leave it at that and know that your word is what they say about supporting it. Back to the planning board, any further comments? So what I would propose is just to make sure that what is eventually paved in this area is codified in our decision that we not only consider a motion to request that this be a minor modification and a motion to approve it, but also incorporate some language that allows for coverage of the weeded area as well as the gravel on the submitted plan for this minor modification. Would that work, Andy?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, so we just need a motion to consider the request minor, motion to approve with, as amended this evening. And I hope, Linda, you caught that, I hope. I know you can't talk to us, but if you need to, please do.
Yeah, if I could, just for the record, the, the motion, as I understand, is to approve the minor modification for the replacement of gravel with asphalt, as well as the adjustment to incorporate the change of a portion of the weeded area to parking, just to reconcile with the condo plans.
Correct. And I'll take a motion to that effect from a board member.
Happy to make that, Bonnie.
Thank you, Don. And second?
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you, Alden. And let me call Roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that is approved. And we'll move on.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all that you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. This is where we're going to take 47-story avenue. Andy? And the applicant is represented by Tony, and I'm sorry, I didn't write down your last name.
Cappuccini, Mrs.
Cappuccini, thank you. So let's hear the update since we last talked to you.
So since we were last there, we, you would ask us to look for some more vertical plantings and increase the density on the site. We went back and what we've proposed is to, to plant a substantial number of cow forested grass clumps. And those stand about three to five feet high. You'll see those in front of Panera. They're kind of a large like a reed type grass. And then on the edges where we were asked for some more vertical, we're proposing Red Dragon Japanese maple. And that's a sapling that you see in the photo there. They get to, to stand about six feet tall when they're fully grown. And, and we think that the contrast between the red leaves and the fall between the, with the Japanese maple, with the yellow reed grass will provide a nice contrast with the, the green boxwoods that we have on the site. So that was the thought process there. And on the plan, we added the site triangles for the views approaching and departing and showing that we're trying to keep the taller plants out of that area. And, you know, this is based off of the MASTOT revisions to the driveway and the entranceway.
Okay, we had some differences of opinion in the board last time around about the landscaping. This is their proposed response. Could I hear from members of the board on your reaction to this, please?
So it's Alden. I like the, the clustering that they've done on the new landscaping plan, and I think the addition of those trees with the contrast, I think is a, is a good thing, a good improvement.
Okay, anyone else?
I'll second that.
Hi, I, this is Tanya. I also think it's fine. I've, I've driven by this a few times and paid attention a little bit more to what's there and, and I think this will, this would satisfy me.
Okay. Anyone else?
This is Beth. I agree. I guess my only concern would be the size of the Japanese maple in comparison to the reed grass until the depending on what size are going to be planted. How tall did you say the Japanese maple versus the reed grass?
Japanese maple gets to, you know, about six feet on average. They can't get as tall as eight feet, but, but like I said, about six feet on average. And, and we're thinking about a four-foot height when you plant them. So that was something that was asked. We, we can add that to this, to the decision. That's not a problem for the Japanese maple to be, you know, four feet taller.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I'm, I'm fine with it. I think it looks so much better.
Yes, Tony, you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. I know it's been a
Yeah, I mean, when we were making suggestions last time, they were examples. And of course, we go for the highest and most dense because that's all we know from you know, other applications and more residential neighborhoods. So thank you for reinterpreting our interest and presenting this solution. Okay, Andy, is there anything else that we should be considering?
No, I think at this point, with that issue having been resolved, all the other issues have been incorporated. To my knowledge, the satisfaction of the planning board and certainly to Phil Christensen. And obviously, as mentioned earlier in the process, most of these changes really came out of the need to address MASTOT's concerns about the sidewalk section, for instance, which actually, in my opinion, is an improvement because it better defines those radiuses for, for the crossings for the pedestrians.
Okay, well, in preparation for the motion, let me just clarify, this thing has been hanging on for each one of our discussions, this special permit. Special condition number two in the decision was incorrectly located and it's going to be the, the, the sign is supposed to be near the pickup window, not at the exit. And that change will be incorporated into the language of this approved minor modification. So Andy, I don't know how to say that as part of the motion. If you could state that more clearly for the record, then I will take a motion.
So as I understand it, it would be the planning board's motion to approve the site plan modification request per the most recent landscape plan that's been submitted to, to reflect the changes that are shown on there and as required by MASTOT. And also to require and condition that modification upon the correction of the sign location as indicated this evening.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Alden?
Thank you.
A second, Leah.
Thank you. And I will take Roll, call Roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Did I call everybody?
You didn't call me. This is Tanya.
Yeah, I thought I missed somebody. Hi, Tanya.
And I, I say yes.
Thank you. Okay, that's approved.
Thank you all for your time.
You're welcome, Tony. Thank you. All right. We are now up to the two requests having to do with the reserve at Bashaw Farm, also known as Colby Farm 1, OSRD and subdivision. The first item on our agenda is a, is a request to, for release of covenant. And because it's first, we'll look at that. And I believe the applicant's attorney is here to make the request. Is that correct?
That, that's correct, Madam Chair. With me this evening, in case we need it also, is David Daley and Jonathan Miller. But the applicant has been moving along. And we are at the point that we have, actually have some closings on Friday, three to be exact. And we are seeking a release. We actually originally filed this in October. But the applicant really wanted to get some more work done before coming into the board for the release. And so they, we've continued it until tonight. And as you can see from my cover letter to you, right now, we have Phil's letter up here, but from my cover letter to you, Phil is recommending a total bond in place of the covenant of $72,700. Now, that's not how much work actually needs to be done out there. That includes a pretty significant retainage. So there's some rail fencing that needs to go up, the signage on the rail fencing and the granite project sign. That's estimated at $18,900. There's some loaming and seeding that's going to need to be touched up in the spring. That's $1,800. And then the trail along lots 15, 12, and 13, to finish that out, that's about $5,000. And then the as-built plans, $5,000. And then Phil wants us to have a retainage in there to cover that. So as you can see, the retainage is more than half of the price of the 727. So there's plenty of money there to cover those things that are undone. And so we did get a final letter from Phil. You see that December 8th letter. Phil was out on the site on October 26th, December 2nd, and then again more recently. And today provided an email to Caitlin regarding one last question he had regarding the contact things over the grates. And he's all set with that. And if there's any issue in the spring regarding the grading around those, he said there's plenty of money in the retainage to take care of that. So our request tonight is that you release the covenant so that we can actually start to transfer these lots. But that we will be providing tomorrow a bond, which is already, the form of the bond has already been provided to the city and approved in the amount of $72,700 to wrap everything up before the end of the project.
I wanted some more clarification. You mentioned the grates over the, the drainage, but there's another issue apparently that was raised in Phil's memo today that he was discussing with Jonathan that hasn't been resolved, something about the the actual flow into the drainage.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. I did say, I did mention that. So he says the water flow by, I'm reading from his email. The water flow bypass I noted in my previous email is due to grading issued rather than a grate capacity issue. Grading adjustments can be made in the spring and there is adequate bond money available to ensure it gets done.
Yeah, and this is Andy. I just note the staff have received a copy of that email as well. So as we understand it, the great issue is resolved. It's just some minimal grading that can be adjusted. And Phil believes that's not a problem at this point in terms of the estimate for the covenant release.
Okay, any other, any comments or questions from board members, please?
The reference to the email, do we have that?
Yeah.
No, that just came in at 5 o'clock today, so I don't know if I got a chance to send it out.
It went to Caitlin at 5:05.
No, I, I, I understand. I'm just trying to understand, we're assuming we're asking to vote on something that's predicated on some email that we haven't received. I for one am, am, am hearing that that email is satisfactory to the, to the planning, to, to, to Andy. Is that right, Andy? Just want to be sure I'm not misunderstanding something.
Yeah, correct. So to your point exactly, although the, I certainly as Director of the Department, I, I don't, I frowned upon last minute, you know, submissions. But in general, we do have the main concern here, which was that the city's consulting engineer look at this particular issue, in this case, the design for the grades. And verify that he was comfortable that the smaller grades would not be an issue for, you know, the flow of water. So he has confirmed that Caitlin has a copy of that email, although I have not, I don't think, received a copy of it. I don't see one here. Caitlin has a copy of that and that could be added to the file as noted here this evening. Because it does show that Phil has approved the great component and that he does not believe the estimate needs to be revised any further to account for some minimal grading that will be adjusted in that area.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There was another issue in his earlier memo that we did see, which had to do with he suggests that the entrance to the roads to the subdivision with curbing are within the right-of-way of Colby Farm Lane and suggests to avoid future arguments over maintenance and repair responsibilities, the infrastructure maintenance required by the homeowners association should clearly be defined. Where would that be appropriately codified, Andy?
Well, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor. I made you, I just made you chair, Madam Chair. The, actually, you guys are so good that you already had us put it in the homeowners association document.
About the road, about the right-of-way? I know everything else was covered in there.
So what Phil's referring to is the gravel parking area and the, in the area right around the front. And so let me read, I'm going to read you the homeowners association provision, if that's all right?
Sure.
There is also a road, the land upon which the road exists, sidewalks, the land between the road and the sidewalks, infrastructure within the road, such as water, storm, storm grades, a gravel parking area and lighting, which shall refer to as common infrastructure. So that's all part of the homeowners association responsibility.
All right. I know we had talked about having a clear statement about the use of that road by heavy equipment for the city facilities at the end. I just didn't remember that detail. Thank you.
Yeah, so that
I wanted to clarify on that. I, I think what Phil was getting at was just the fact that if you look at the plan we have up on the screen right now, that part of that new curbing that was installed is actually the public right-of-way. So with regard to ongoing maintenance or, you know, repairs if needed to any of that curbing or the work in the right-of-way itself, plowing and so forth, that that just be clearly noted that there's a, you know, a distinctive line there between the public right-of-way and the private way.
Right. I don't, I don't think that that's a concern. I mean, I, I think it's covered in the homeowners association documents and then you have, like you do anywhere else, you have the, you know, the curbing that's in the public right-of-way. So
Yeah, I don't, for the office, the office of planning and development's perspective, and I, I think through Caitlin, we close this loop right, close this loop through Caitlin. I don't see this as an issue here. You know, obviously Jamie Tuglow was out there and oversaw some of the curbing work that was done out there. And he's fully aware that that's infrastructure the city now has beyond the right-of-way line.
Okay. So the release of the covenant means that all the infrastructure is in place. And everything that has to do with public utilities and so on are all connected. Is that correct?
Yes. So the, 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 under the subdivision control law, chapter 41, in order to assure that there is adequate public utilities and access to each of the lots, an applicant may, shall provide and the board shall require one of three forms of security. A covenant, a tripartite agreement, or a bond. And so we chose the covenant to begin with, which is what most people do, right? Until we got all of the infrastructure in. And obviously, the road is all complete. Everything's complete, except for what you see listed on my letter to you. And so in place of the covenant, we are saying, okay, we're down to $72,700, of which $30,000 is actually to do the work. And so we want to give you a bond to assure that that work is completed, which is completely acceptable in the subdivision control law. And so for the infrastructure that is not complete, namely those one, two, three, well, there's three items, part of it's a as-built plan. We're offering you a, a bond in case, you know, it doesn't get done, which obviously is not going to happen here. But so that's what we're asking you to release the covenant and supplant, supplant it with the bond, which will cover the remaining work to be done.
Well, the reason why I ask is that Well, the reason why I ask is it also covers sidewalks, right?
I'm not, what do you mean?
I mean, as part of the infrastructure, sidewalks are part of that, right? As part, if.
Structure on the plan, all of the infrastructure on the plan that we are required to complete.
Where I'm going with this is the next discussion we're going to have about the sidewalk going up to Low Street. So I'm wondering if that sidewalk is covered, is part of a of the covenant that we are now releasing.
Right. The sidewalks are all done. I, I guess, I'm, I'm confused by that comment. The, the items that were a part of the approved subdivision plan, which needed to be completed, are all done according to, according to the plan, according to the DPS director, according to your peer review engineer. And the only items left to be done are the rail fence, the signage, granite project sign, loam seed, trail along the lots, and the as-built plans.
Well, our next, our next request is for a minor modification for something that looks different from what the plan was. So as long as that is outstanding, I'm wondering if we should hold off on the decision to approve this covenant until after we have that discussion.
Well, so here's, here's my confusion about the next item on the agenda. First, this next item on the agenda was listed as a discussion. And tonight I see it's listed as a request for minor modification. In August, this board voted to allow the planning director to make, to approve minor modifications. And the planning director approved the modification at the request of DPS, not at the request of the applicant, at the request of DPS in.
November.
Right. So I'm not really sure why the, except that some people have asked about it, why we're here? Because we have an approval from the planning director who was authorized to do so by the planning board in August. And it was done pursuant to a request and direction by DPS.
Okay, so we've just gotten into that other discussion. So by definition, we're going to put a hold on the vote for the covenant. We will get to it tonight, I promise. But I would like to move to this other request for minor modification that you have just introduced, if that's okay with the rest of the board. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
Fine.
All right. So the change from a discussion to a minor modification came from the planning office. So Andy, maybe you could speak to that to get us sort of on the same page before we discuss the content?
Yeah, sure. So the reason this was added as a discussion item on the agenda is, and I can pull up some visuals as I'm talking here. There is, I'm just going to show first the aerial photograph of the area.
Before you go into the content, could you just answer Attorney Mead's question? How this moved from a discussion point to a request for a minor modification?
So I had asked Diane to clarify during the meeting, during the agenda, that this be changed. This is Monday because she was out on vacation last week. So I'd asked her on Monday morning, when she came back in, to update the agenda to show this was a discussion of the minor modification for this particular sidewalk and curbing work. As Lisa pointed out, Jamie Tuclo and I had gone out there to the site. Jennifer Blanchet was out there as well. We took a look at this particular issue, given the adjustment. I guess we're going to talk to you a little bit more here. The bottom line was there was a concern raised by the Department of Public Services and there was consensus, including following that meeting by the city's engineer, that the crosswalk on Low Street was not a safe place to be dumping pedestrians out into. And it appeared to us to be potentially encouraging other accidents to happen in that area. So we can walk through the dynamics of that as it led out of the plan. But there were a couple of concerns that were being raised simultaneously. So it was my understanding that the Department of Public Services wanted to make sure in conjunction with the developer's timeframe here that the curbing and paving work could be done prior to the winter season. They were uncomfortable, given the city's facilities down the street in particular. The, and the residents, obviously, in that street, leaving it in the construction state for the winter. So the developer and the Department of Public Services were expedited timeframe to try to get that paving work done. When they were looking at the, their curbing here, the radius out towards Low Street, which we can go into more detail. The bottom line was there was some concern there from DPS, at least, that the curve of the radius was going further out into Low Street and that that was of concern in terms of being a little bit too far out there. And more particularly that the sidewalk itself, the hatched crosswalk, and we can go through those images, doesn't have an ADA ramp on the other side and has a grass sidewalk, at least the present on the other side. And there isn't any control there. And because of the sightlines, they were very concerned about that. I agreed with that concern when I went out there, as it's been confirmed here tonight. I agreed that that was a safety concern to have the sidewalk go out to the ramp, the hatched sidewalk or crosswalk that's already there in the intersection, and encourage pedestrians, and this was a concern that was raised during the initial permitting, to have pedestrians crossing Low Street in that location without some sort of pedestrian control. It, I, I realize that there was some suggestion from at least one board member that curbing could be pushed out further into the roadway. That actually seems inconsistent with the concern that was raised by DPS, the zoning administrator. And just, you know, I agreed with myself when we looked out on the roadway, what that would end up doing to, to cars coming through that intersection. There was concern that that might not be safe. And we did not want to dump pedestrians into a crosswalk that did not have an accessible ramp on the other side because that's not consistent with the Americans with Disabilities Act and so forth. So, and we can show those images. So the bottom line was, there was concern that that was what was originally approved. And what, what was essentially going to be constructed but then wasn't in this location was not a safe condition to leave like that. And so in essence, there was an agreement, Jennifer and Jamie and I all agreed that it made more sense to stop the sidewalk element where it was on the plan, as you're going to see and discuss it further this night. But there, because of the discrepancy here, it seemed important that we circle back with the planning board and have a discussion about this issue. Because in neither instance, in my opinion, in neither instance, do we have an ideal situation there with Colby Farm Lane and Low Street. In either case, given that there was no condition during the initial permitting to have a hock-style signal or some sort of, not a hock-style, but a pedestrian-activated button or anything, there's, there's no visibility really to the vehicles that are coming from the Port Plaza area down Low Street to see that this is a crosswalk they're going to intercept and there isn't a ramp on the other side. And the developer was not required to put that in. So, so there, there are a couple of issues here that came about from the way it was originally approved that we did not feel was a safe condition or a compliant condition to have put into the field at that point. And so given the concerns that were raised from some, by some of the butters, essentially simultaneously or shortly thereafter, when the work was put in by the developer, the, a couple of the butters there had expressed concern about the new curb line, which was on the approved plans, and that's been installed now. The grass strip that's there and how that thin the roadway, and I guess there was some concern about on-street parking or parking along the side of the roadway there and how that might potentially narrow that. In my opinion, that's what was constructed is consistent with the original plan. So I don't know what manner or mechanism there would be to change that now. But because of the concerns that were raised here and some of those residents having maybe a different perspective of how things were permitted back then and how they were dealt with, it seemed only appropriate to have a discussion here with the planning board about this particular crossing. You know, given all these different facets, I can give more detail if you want.
Okay, no, that, that's, no, I want to separate out the butters' concerns about parking on Colby Farm Lane from this crossing. Let's stick with the crossing for now. And before I open it up to the planning board members who I want to hear from and your memory of how this happened, I want to quote something from the July seventeenth discussion we had. And from our minutes, Nick Cracknell said that the sidewalk would wrap around the corner and tip down at the crosswalk. The stop sign would need to move forward because it was too far back. DPS would determine exactly where the sidewalk ends. And then it turns out it was myself, I suggested a pedestrian crossing light. And Andy, you said the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee would be the correct advisory group for that issue. So we went ahead and, and made the decision with the, with the plan, the way it was proposed, to go around the corner with a ramp to that crossing with the idea that the city would build the other connection on the other side and do something around the safety of that crossing. So whether it's a chicken or an egg coming first, I don't know here, but somebody has to start it. And I suppose our planning, our decision was to let the applicant go as far as they could go and do their piece of it, and the city would pick up from there. So that's my understanding of why we made the decision the way we did. And sticking with just this crossing here and what has been built and what should have been built, I'd like planning more members to weigh in, please.
Hi, yeah, this is Alden. Could, the, you mentioned that the sidewalk work is complete. And I see from the picture that Andy's showing now, it looks like the curb is going around the corner up to the crosswalk. Is that a sidewalk in place?
No, no, it's just a curb. The sidewalk stops and has a ramp on the end of Colby Farm Lane facing where the traffic person is in the middle of the street. And there is no connection to the other side. There's no sidewalk up there going along Low Street, and there's none planned. So that's what's finished today.
So, so the, the ramp that you mentioned is, is as if to cross Colby Farm Lane?
That's where it is today. The plan says that the sidewalk should have gone around the corner and provided a ramp to this marked, this striped crosswalk here. And instead, they did this other one with Jamie and Andy in the field approving it and not bringing it to us for consideration.
To clarify, if the sidewalk had gone all the way around the corner and there was a ramp at the crosswalk and the city, let's just say the city agreed to put a ramp on the opposite side of Low Street, that is still not considered a satisfactory solution because the distance is so long across the street? Is that correct?
And because of the curvature of the road.
This is Andy. Just to clarify, there's two things going on there. One is the, as you can see in the photograph here, there's no ramp on the other side. And it was not, the planning board hadn't got confirmation from the Department of Public Services or from the mayor that there was, money is available to do this installation here, that that would be prioritized. So we never closed that loop essentially before the plans were approved for the developer here. What was approved was the, as Bonnie mentioned, the dead ending of the developer's sidewalk to that existing hatched crosswalk. But there were two things going on. One was there was no closure of what the city would do on the other side. And I suspect that had we asked, or closed that loop with the Department of Public Services before the permit was issued to Lisa and the developer, you know, some time ago, we probably would have heard the Department of Public Services say it makes more sense to have the developer pay for what's going on the opposite side of Low Street as well, rather than asking the city to do the other component. So we probably would have seen the developer put in that at least accessible connection or ramp there. The other issue that was raised that we had pointed out was the, the sightline issue. And again, that was, that's primarily from cars coming from Port Plaza in that direction. Because as they come through this intersection, they don't really have, and they're often traveling at high speed, don't have enough advance notice of, of what's going on there. And given that there isn't a ramp on the other side for folks to cross onto, it seems even more precarious to send, you know, pedestrians out into that crosswalk. So there were two things going on there that were of concern to the Department of Public Services and to Jennifer and myself when we went out there. We did not think that that was a safe condition to leave in, in, in state like that. In my opinion, it requires some sort of pedestrian control that can be seen wherever its pole placement is or light placement is further up the street to let people know that there is a crossing they're about to approach.
Yeah, Mr. Madam Chair, can I just, I just want to clarify one thing here. The applicant built, and as you can see, there's curbing started to be bid, the sidewalk according to plan and was asked to stop. And then a change was agreed upon. So the applicant did what was A, approved to do, and then B, asked to do. So I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Andy. I just want to make sure it clear for the record. I, I'm not expressing concern here with the developer. My concern is just that I don't see without, just as context, this is not a criticism of everybody, just in context. It seems to me that the only safe crossing we could really have here is something that is more visible to vehicles traveling in either direction on Low Street. And that was the safety concern that was of primary interest out there in addition to the absence of an accessible ramp on the other side and clarity as to who was going to do that.
So would somebody please clarify for me why the current solution is a good one? The, the, what's been built with one ramp, you know, the end of the sidewalk, a ramp going across Colby Farm Lane to nowhere? And Andy, because you, or is Jamie here?
Unfortunately, I don't see Jamie here this evening.
Then you'll have to answer for him. I don't get that either. I'm sort of baffled.
Yeah, the, part of the difficulty we have at this intersection, and you can see it in the photo too, is just that there aren't really ADA ramps or sidewalks on all four intersections or corners of the intersection. So there, you know, in neither place was there going to be, and again, the developer is not required, required on either of those corners there to meet on the other side, you know, with a ramp, if you will. So where that telephone pole is, there's no sidewalk, there's no ramp to meet. And so it's true that there is a crossing or a ramp that goes into Colby Farm Lane there. But I think that the idea there, and as we discussed, Jamie and Jennifer and I discussed it out there in the field with the developer, the bottom line was at least we were not sending folks out into the dangerous high-speed sightline issues in Low Street. And that's why we felt that what the developer was doing there was the most reasonable alternative, given, given the fact that there was no control required in the planning board's original approval. And I suspect the developer would not be inclined to open up to them. I, I suspect they would not be interested in paying the additional costs associated with installing one now, given it was not part of the original permitting conditions.
Just a comment on, on that. It seems to me, given that the crosswalk is painted there, I think you're funneling people towards that crosswalk, whether there's a sidewalk there or not. So I don't, I don't see how, you know, how this changes anything, how limiting the sidewalk to the end at the stop sign impacts at all, if that's your concern about where the pedestrians are going.
Yeah, again, talking with Department of Public Services and the city's engineer, we, we talked about a lot of these issues with the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee composition of several different city officials. Bottom line is that cross, that crosswalk really shouldn't be in its present location, given the ends that it has right now. So again, at the end of the day, what we probably should have done in hindsight during permitting of this project is before approving the project, look at this particular crosswalk that was happening on Low Street and confirm with the Department of Public Services or the mayor's office or otherwise, who is going to finish the other side of that, rather than dealing with only one side of the, the crosswalk of the, of the intersection that's going on. Because you're right, we do have a hatched crosswalk out there. But everyone, all the, the primary officials working for the city feel that this is a safety concern where it is right now, regardless of, of anything else.
Right, I, I agree. I think it is a safety concern, but I don't see, given that the crosswalk is there, I don't see what that has to do anything with the developer.
Yeah, it seems to me, I, 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 I agree. The developer was going to follow the plans and the special conditions, the, the, the planning department and or entities within of, of the city directed the applicant to do, to do something different, which I'm surely not going to Monday morning quarterback. And it seems to me that this conversation is not relevant with respect to the developer and/or his, his lack of following the approved by the planning board plans. If, if we all think that we need a minor modification to memorialize the decisions of the planning department and or other officials within the city, I'm happy to make that motion. But Kaylee, I'm, I'm a bit puzzled specifically with respect to what burden, if any, the applicant has.
Other comments?
This is Beth. I'll just, I'm confused why this wasn't raised earlier. I know that in the very first discussion of this project, we all, or several of the members pointed out that this was a dangerous intersection and there was some talk about, you know, trimming some vegetation to have better sightlines. But it seemed to me that, the impression I got was that this was not something that the developer was going to do or that we could ask the developer to do to, you know, help the, to make this intersection safer. You know, we all pointed out traffic-wise and then I think, you know, there, it's close to the school, there's going to be families living here. I mean, we had this discussion and I don't know why. There's going to be families living here. I mean, we had this discussion and I don't know why nothing was raised about. Um, you know, from the Department of Public Safety or from traffic advisory committees as to what would be something that we could do with the permit to address the issues. So I'm just wondering, you know, I don't want this to happen again on another project, so I'm not, did DPS have a look at this project beforehand? Or?
Yeah, this is Andy. So to clarify how we do things again, typically, uh, and again, this is going back months or years at this point. Um, Caitlin and I route plans to the other departments. We have a technical review meeting, uh, on a regular basis, on a monthly basis with other departments. Um, Caitlin requests comments from other departments. We get those comments in. Um, we provide those to the planning board. We work with the applicant and the, uh, peer review consultants is needed to resolve issues and so forth. Um, so bottom line is these were routed to other departments for comments. Whether or not we received any comments, uh, obviously. You know, we obviously didn't close this loop in some format. Um, I don't recall it, uh, in my opinion, I don't recall receiving any definitive comments from DPS. About this, uh, at that time, or from the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee per se, uh, or the, the tech review folks per se. I do know that is somewhere in that process, there were a number of times in which I had raised concern. Um, and again, this was in relation to, um, the, um, there was the development here and then with the, the playground that was happening across the street. Concerned that, uh, the Low Street intersection was a safety issue. There was discussion at that time, as I recall, with the resident at the corner of Colby Farm Lane and Low Street. Where some vegetation was, was trimmed. And as you may recall, Nick Cracknell at the time, this is going back some time, but Nick Cracknell was working on this particular project early in the permitting. Um, when the rezoning in fact was happening back then, uh, to allow that product to proceed. And he had, um, proposed that some of that vegetation be cleared to address that sightline issue from the, again, the cars coming from the Story Avenue side. But that's the only, um, uh, other than, uh, you know, again, what, what the planning board approved for that sidewalk coming out to the, the crosswalk that's there. That's the only improvement that was done, um, to improve the sightlines or deal with the safety issue of that crossing.
And this is Leah. I, maybe, maybe I'm, I'm missing something. It's very possible, but I, I, I feel like this, the solution to end the sidewalk. Before the crosswalk, it's, has only made a, a not so good situation worse. Because people are still going to have to cross Low Street, and maybe this is where I'm missing something. So if it were me and I wanted to get to the other side, if the sidewalk stops, I'm going to continue walking and I'm going to use the crosswalk. Because the crosswalk tells me that's the safest route. That's what those stripes mean. So what I'm, what I don't understand is why we wouldn't continue the sidewalk, have the ramp onto the sidewalk. Demand that the city put a ramp on the other side, because frankly, I think it's their obligation to do so at this point. And then also to re, uh, address the curvature. Why not paint on the, on the street, slow, slow down, crosswalk ahead or something like that? That's really obvious, that makes people aware before they get to the crosswalk, that there's a crosswalk ahead.
Actually, there's a sign before you get on that curve coming in.
But if that's not enough, why not do, apparently that's not enough. So why not do more and, and paint something on the street? Something that you cannot miss.
Well, that would help us except for tomorrow when it's covered with snow. But.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, but I see where you're, where you're going with that, that it's, the crosswalk is there. The other solution, of course, is to say you can't cross there at all and, and paint over that crosswalk.
But people are going to cross. They have to get across Low Street. I mean, I don't, but somebody's going to have to at some point.
Yeah.
So, and where are they going to go? They're going to.
The light at, at way down at the next light.
It's, it's, it's not going to happen. People are just going to cross, but they're going to be on a, they're going, they're not going to be accommodated.
You're right.
Has anyone looked at the sightlines if the crosswalk are on the other side, uh, of Colby Farm Lane crossing Low Street?
Yeah, it does improve, but, uh, there's still an issue, but it does definitely improve the, the problem, I guess, there. If there isn't any sidewalk or, or curbing that would match, then we'd have to adjust that.
The problem is that you're right in the middle of the curve. I can't imagine it's safer. This gives you a longer distance to see people because you know you're coming to an intersection, so you're going to be slowing down anyway.
I, I agree with that.
Put it on the other side, you're in the middle of the curve and you can't see a thing. Um, we're not the ones to make this decision. Had one the first time, we're not going to make a good one this time if we try to solve it. It's clear that, um, the city dropped the ball and that the, um, advisory, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee didn't get back to us. Or, or, um, DPS in time to change our decision. Um, and so the, the, the plan, the approved plan says come around the corner and meet up at that crosswalk. Um, the DPS and Planning Department, as, uh, Attorney Mead said. Made a change in the field and approved it on our behalf. And I'm with, um, whomever said it, I think it should have been brought back to us. Um, just as a heads up, because I don't like the idea that if we do approve this minor modification, this as a minor modification and leave it as it is. Or even suggest some changes, that it's basically approving, um, after the fact. A change in the field, which both the, uh, definitive subdivision plan and the special permit have standard conditions in there that say if you're going to make any changes in the field, or if you find whatever the exact wording is, it's effectively, if you see any changes that need to be made, you will come back to the planning board before you make them.
I have a question, a follow-up question. I mean, I'm inclined not to approve this minor modification, but as I understand it. The applicant isn't even applying for a minor modification.
Right. If I could, Madam Chair, um, this board, um, this board authorized the, um, planning director in August to approve what he determined to be minor modifications. So we, we did not apply here tonight for this as a change, because as far as we were concerned. It is changed, um, pursuant to the authorization the board gave the planning director at the end of the summer. And in fact, I have an email from Andy saying that. Um, so I, I hear what you're saying, um, but we're, we're not here for a minor modification. The board, while the decision didn't say that, they au- you authorized the planning director to make those changes in the summer.
Andy, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I agree with the modification that was done there. That's the change that the planning board had granted based on Lisa, the developer's request in order to expedite what are so-called minor changes. The issue, uh, like I said here, was I, I, I felt that, uh, a- as did Jamie and Jennifer, when we went out there in the field. That the concerns that were raised about sightline and safety were significant enough that we did not feel comfortable that combined with the fact that there was no ADA ramp on the other side. Did not make sense, um, given what was going on with the paving work and the curbing and so forth, to have that ramp, uh, dead end there. I understand the balance of concerns on both sides there. To me, the best way for an issue like this to be resolved on a go-forward basis is to s- slow down during the initial permitting process. Um, and look at these particular details so that while the developer is before the planning board for initial permitting and not any modifications through staff or the board later on. The full scope of pedestrian improvements can be required of the developer upfront to address the scope of neighborhood impacts or connections that may need to be made. To me, there is no, um, leverage in the process for the city, for the staff to require an ADA ramp of the developer on the other side of that intersection, uh, to resolve the issue, nor to require, um, pedestrian, you know, uh, control buttons and so forth at the intersection. That's something the planning board would have authority to do during permitting to address those issues with the developer. But there's no ability for us to now resolve those issues on Low Street. And there is, uh, in our opinion, a safety concern with sightlines and speeds in that area.
Unless the city paid, paid for them.
Yeah, but again, the bottom line there is that's not something the planning board had confirmed with other departments. So while I agree with you 100%, that's something that would be an option. It, it, rather than, you know, a- approving it with the assumption that that would be done. And granted, as Bonnie pointed out, we did not hear back from other divisions of the city in great detail on these particular issues back then. But it would maybe make sense to, uh, not approve the plans at a given meeting and wait until the following meeting to get closure on those issues and confirm what might be appropriate, at least so we know, uh, what we're dealing with and during the initial permitting. Because the staff do not have the leverage to require significant improvements or changes, um, you know, later on during the process. That's something the planning board has during the initial permitting.
Okay, so we're here tonight. And, and this is not a request for a minor modification from the applicant. So Andy, I don't think we should be voting on this.
I agree.
Just to make this clear, I, I did not ask, when I asked Bonnie to, uh, to have Diane put this on the agenda, listed as a request for minor modification. I don't even have, I have the old agenda in front of me, so I don't even have the, the changed language she put in there. I was just asking for it to be listed that way because that's what it had come in as, as a request for a minor modification. I was not suggesting, and I don't think Diane was suggesting, that the board is being asked to grant that minor modification or approval. That what we were trying to do is have a conversation here and what's, what the original agenda noted a discussion, because there were these concerns raised by the abutters. There, there was concern about the sidewalk, uh, and then the crossing itself. Uh, however, that, that is dealt with. And it was also particularly concerned from them, I guess, of regarding the curbing that was on Colby Farm Lane. And, um, there was some discussion, again, I, I can't speak for the abutters, uh, who I guess wanted to were here this evening. They, to their understanding, and I don't know where this happened or where, where this, um, thought came from. But there was some understanding from their, talking to someone on the planning board, they said, um, that there wasn't going to be curbing on this development on Colby Farm Lane. And as, as Jennifer and Jamie and I explained to them in the field, or at least Jennifer and I did. Um, what was constructed of the curbing here on Colby Farm Lane is consistent with the locations, uh, of what was approved by the planning board. So the new sidewalk, you know, that was required has been installed, the landscape strip and then the curbing. So the narrowing of the roadway wasn't something that, that Jennifer and I felt the, uh, the staff could, uh, address at this point. Because that was something that, um, you know, had already been installed consistent with the original approval to essentially narrow the roadway.
That's not the point of contention right now. That sidewalk on, as I said earlier, is a separate issue, the sidewalk on Colby Farm Lane. I'd like to close out the conversation, um, with some action item. It may not be for the developer. Um, but maybe it is for the city on the crossing of Low Street. And, um, since you, uh, and other members of the city staff have approved in the field a change, we really have no control over that by the planning board. So I don't think we need to, um, uh, entertain a minor modification for that. Um, so before I close out this part of the discussion and move to the sidewalk on Colby Farm Lane and the abutters. Um, concerns, I'd like to hear from any other planning board members about, um, where you think we ought to take this, um, or propose that the city take, um, this issue of crossing Low Street.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Bonnie, and I think, um, I, I would look to the city to look into this further if they feel there's some change needed.
Yeah, just to note for the record, the mayor and I have agreed with Matt Coogan that this is going in the next Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting. So there's going to be some thorough discussion of, uh, what improvements the city will be able to do here. Um, you know, we, again, to address the safety issue in the crossing and so forth with Department of Public Services.
Uh, just a quick question. This is Tanya. Um, so because Andy, you approved this minor modification for the sidewalk not to curve around to the crosswalk. Does that mean, and, and, and said that it's, that they were fine with where they ended it? Does that mean that there's no, we can't, at this point, we can't really require them to to, to turn, to, to move that sidewalk? Or to hold money to put that sidewalk in or something to that effect, should the pedestrian safeties go in?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. And again, that's why I noted that earlier. So it, the position that staff were put in was essentially having, encouraging a crossing in a place where it's unsafe. And I understand the debate to be had about the existing hatch crosswalk, although it doesn't meet compliance on either side. Um, but the, this, the staff don't have leverage. The, the original point of leverage for the proper improvements would have been during initial permitting. So there wasn't anything the staff could do to resolve the safety at that intersection at this point. So yes, you're right, there is not, um, something the planning board can do to undo the approval that has been granted here for, uh, the conditions in the field today.
Okay, so I was going to say, cause I, I mean, I, it's, it's, I, I, I feel like I remember having this conversation with Nick during the permitting process about, about connecting to this crosswalk or at least allowing. And I, and I think Nick's point at that, at that time was that, that he couldn't make those safety improvements. And, and I, I haven't gone back and reviewed the minutes, but, um, I think that's unfortunate, um, that, that we weren't able to, 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 um, to all come together on this, um, to get something done sooner, but, um, but I also don't want to hold up the applicant. So from my perspective, if, if this was already approved in the field, I think I don't think there's much we can do. I don't want to hold up the applicant here. Um, and I don't, I don't want to tie it to the release of their covenant either. So, um, so I think from my perspective, I, I think we should just not do anything on this minor modification. Cause I don't think we have to and move back to, um, Lisa's request on releasing the covenant.
Okay, um, anyone else want to speak right now about this? And nobody's concerned about the fact with the, um, modification that now has a, an, an end to the sidewalk at the corner and a ramp, um, sending people across Colby Farm Lane to grass and curbing on the other side.
I think we, we have that concern, Bonnie, but there's not really anything I think that we can do at this point.
Okay.
And it seems to me that's the existing situation there as well.
What do you mean by that existing? That, that's what exists right now because they built it as of last month with the.
Right, but I mean, as, as far as the other sides of the streets, having no ramp, no curbs, no sidewalks.
That's what it is, and it's not, it's not changing. Yeah.
Exactly. So I mean, that's just the way it is to me.
I, I think the cities, uh, and the safety, um, uh, Traffic Safety, um, committee have a lot of work to do here. But, um, I think we've gone as far as we can.
Right, I think they need to look at it.
Yeah, um, we will vote on the, on the covenant in a moment, but I want to, uh, continue with, uh, what Andy's brought up twice now. Which is some issue, uh, uh, issue that abutters have with the sidewalk on Colby Farm Lane. For this development that was built according to plan. And, um, we don't usually hear from, um, the public on a minor modification, which this was until we decided it wasn't, but they would, I, if they're here tonight, I would like to give them an opportunity to speak. Um, Andy, do you know if anyone's here who would like to speak about their concerns?
Yeah, I know we have at least Russ Burns here, um, but I've, uh, allowed him to speak if he'd like to unmute himself.
Okay, just one minute. Okay, so before he speaks, he should know that we need his name, his address. And he, um, should not let his comments go on for more than two minutes. And, um, he's welcome to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so, name, Russell Burns. 187 Low Street, Unit 2. Um, two years ago, when this project started, I had sat down with two people from the city department. We talked about this exact problem, the curb and parking. Um, I had told them that the crossing went to nowhere. If they were going to put in a real trail, they needed to have a sidewalk. They needed to keep the parking and it would be safe for the public. I was assured that it would be, and then the city asked me if it was okay if I cut my bushes down so I could open the line of sight. And I told the city the line of sight is still what the curvature is not okay. We need to push the stop sign out 10 feet. They talked about it. They said we could do that. It's, the markings are still on the sidewalk on Low, I mean, on the street and Low Street. Where they were going to push the stop sign out. Everything that I've heard tonight from everybody, and thank you, uh, Ellis, I mean, you were probably the most intelligent person on this. Um, meeting that I've talked to, um, you, you have addressed all of our concerns. Um, Bonnie, I do agree with what you're saying about, oh, we just keep it the way it is. But the reality is we dropped a handicap, which I have a handicap brother who does visit. And I have a school-aged child who does live here and has to go to school here in Newburyport. I will also tell you that the city has been given plans due to the middle school down the street. And our intersection drops directly in it. You have asked for funding from the state to have this fixed. Still has not been done. All of everything I heard tonight, we have talked about, I have been with people, I have sat outside, I've taken days off of work. To show them what the problems would be. I'm not going to get into, I only have two minutes. I'm not going to get into the detail of what I do for work, but I do infrastructure work internationally. Um, this seems to be a dead stick as far as inspections. Um, the DPS had made a correction and change after what we discussed when I walked with the city. Um, in field, which once again, we can go a million OSHA violations that have been going on with this construction site. Um, most of the people in the city have been very nice, living around here, trying to deal with it, understanding its growth. But at the same time, when we finally saw we put a five-foot wide beauty curb, which does not exist in any part of this neighborhood to sell million-dollar homes for future tax dollars that only drops our property, I mean, brought our property tax up, as the mayor said, 1% because of future developments. We are the people paying the price. I have a family that lived across the street and walked out with his family the other day. And almost got hit by a car coming around into this blind. this blind turn because it dropped them off into the open street to a grassy knoll of nowhere. The curb was literally put in when I told the contractor that that curb was put in and it was going to cause a problem because it ends into a fence. Nobody can turn and walk on the grass and go across the unlit and unprotected schoolway, which I discussed two years ago. I sat down and had this conversation with the city. I do this for a living. And it seems to me with everything I'm seeing that it keeps dropping off to their siding with the contractors and not looking into the future problems of the people that have lived here. Especially when they're nice, I let them cut down my trees, I let them cut down my bushes for safety reasons. I didn't want them cut down, they look pretty. But I cut them down because it might save a life. Now I'm hearing that we're not gonna turn the corner and put a light in or correct. I was actually told by one person on the city committee that it is not a law to have a handicap access into the crosswalk around Low Street. And then I hear another city member tonight say, we'll continue down a block or two on grass to cut across when there's light. We have a developer that's selling million dollar homes that's going to bring in lots of tax money to the city, which we need, and I appreciate, and I'm okay with the growth.
I've let you go on quite a bit longer than two minutes. Could you wrap it up, please?
Well, I'm done. This is my point is I talked about every problem we spoke about tonight. I heard everybody say that there was a failure and there's been no city inspectors. Nobody returns the phone calls when we ask them about what's going on. Nobody deals with the public. We let this inspector get, I mean, this developer finish something that now we as taxpayers are going to have to correct because Andy, DPS, Ellis, Nick, and nobody did anything that we asked two years ago. So now us as taxpayers and somebody who might get killed on the corner is going to have to pay that price because the city is not here to protect us.
Thank you for your comments and I, I'm sorry, you're not getting a response that you need. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. As we've said earlier, there was a plan to go around the corner and create the beginning of a safer crossing on Low Street. That's been changed. Do any board members, I think we've already said that it's beyond our control, but does anyone have any other thoughts at this point about what we could do about this? So it's going to go to Traffic Safety Committee and
Bonnie, I'm just wondering, sorry, just really quickly, as far as what we could do about it, I mean, could we, could we send a letter on behalf of the planning board to the Traffic Safety Committee, you know, just stating at the planning board? You know, had approved this with a having the developer curve the corner and have a ramp to the crosswalk with the intention of making in, you know, making a safer crossing or making making a sidewalk so that people could cross and that and that we would support and a pedestrian safety here as a priority with these this new development going in. I don't know, just something to that effect. Could we do that?
Absolutely. I'll draft something up with your help, Tanya.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Bonnie.
And we'll look at that together. Anyone else with some other advice? Okay, so we are agreed as a planning board that this this request for minor modification is not necessary because it was an approved authorized approval in the field by the staff. So we'll go back to the covenant request, release of covenant request. Any further discussion before I take a motion on that?
I just, I just have a question. I don't know if it's relevant at all. I just was curious with the sidewalk that's built by the developer up to up to the stop sign at Low Street. Are they also responsible for clearing the snow on that sidewalk all the way up? Or is that going to be the responsibility of the property owner on the corner?
Homeowners Association goes as far as their own property, I understand. Have I got that right?
We have an ordinance in the city of Newport that if you have a sidewalk in front of your house, you have to clear the snow.
In front of your own house, so that would be the responsibility of the homeowner in who's in in front of whose house the sidewalk is.
That is correct.
Good.
Right. Okay, yeah, so they built the sidewalk there on that property owner's frontage, and so now they have to clear it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The sidewalk was approved plans.
Yes.
Modified approved plans.
Not the sidewalk, not that sidewalk, Bonnie, that sidewalk was part of the original approved.
Oh, the sidewalk is within the development, yes.
No, the
It goes beyond.
Sidewalk along Colby Farm Lane is part of the approved plans.
Correct, correct. I think we've discussed everything. Yeah, relating to the issues on the sidewalk, all sidewalks. So we will go back to having a motion to approve the release of covenant. May I have that motion, please?
And Bonnie, I'm happy to make it. And just to clarify, it's not only the release of covenant, but I believe it's also to approve a bond in its place in the amount of, and I forget the number, $71,000 and change.
Seventy-two thousand seven hundred.
So if I'm correct in my understanding, that'll make that motion.
Okay, that's more correct than than just the straight release. Thank you. Don, and a second from
I'll second.
Okay, second from MJ. And it also includes, just to add to the motion, to authorize the planning board chair to sign the the related covenant. So that authorizes me to sign it. All right, I'll go through the roll call.
Excuse me, Bonnie, now I'm confused. It says it allows you to sign the covenant. I thought, is it, is it the release of covenant or you're signing some covenant? I'm confused now.
To sign the covenant. And now I'm just going through the wording in front of me, and you're right.
I just questioned them, the word, is the wording correct?
No, it should be and authorize the planning board chair to sign the release of covenant. Thank you. We ready for the roll call? Alden?
Yeah.
Yes.
It didn't sound like Alden. Let's hear Alden's voice say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And while I still have you here, do I have to physically sign that because it has to be notarized? I can't do that electronically, which means we're gonna tromp through the snow tomorrow and do this?
I'm gonna be, Bonnie, I'm happy to do it at your convenience. I will be in my office all day tomorrow, which obviously is right up from City Hall, so or I can meet you somewhere if you want to.
No, that that works. It's just that I don't, I have to get an electronic copy of it, print it, and then bring it along, and then I can sign it with you notarizing it.
Right, I have, I believe I have the the release.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so you don't need to print it.
Okay, so I'll call before I come, just depending on the weather and how deep the snow is, and I let my snowshoes to somebody, so I have to clump through the through the snow.
You walk on the streets, I'm sure they'll be clear.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow morning. Thank you. Next agenda item.
Wow.
What? Request for minor modification at One Boston Way. This seems to be a weather related request. Andy, am I correct on that?
That's correct. This is pretty typical. In this case, they're just asking to do the landscaping work before June 30th of this year or 2021, the coming season. This is pretty typical around winter season or fall season, so the office has no objection to granting the extension on the landscaping work. That would allow them to, you know, proceed with, you know, finishing up and occupying the building during that timeframe while still requiring them to complete the work as soon as it's the season allows in the spring, essentially.
Okay, just to read it into the record, special permit number four pedestrian and bike path improvements. The applicant is requesting a modification to special condition number four to allow for the paving of the pedestrian connection to the MBTA ramp to be completed by June 30th, 2021, rather than before any occupancy permit. Minco and for the record, Minco is estimating that they will apply for occupancy in February. Any questions, comments? Then I will take a motion to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification request, the decision for One Boston Way.
So moved Alden?
Thank you. Second?
Leah, second.
And I will call roll Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, that is approved. Then we have approval of the minutes from December 2nd. Do I have a motion?
This Tanya, I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I can second.
A second, Alden?
Whoops, I heard MJ first, I think.
That's fine.
Yep, it was me.
Okay. Okay, any discussion worth any significant changes that are worth discussing that need to be discussed? Okay, I'll call the roll for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Minutes are approved. Andy, anything on zoning amendments or other updates?
Yeah, short term rent units, hard to say where that's going to be into the next year, but my understanding is that the it'll be stocking committee maybe for a while. There's some desire from the licenses and permits committee chair of the city council, which is the second committee that's got those related amendments. There's the planning and development committee that has the zoning law in particular. But the licensing amendment that's related, I guess there's a desire there from the chair to have public meetings or in person on something like that, which, given the pandemic and the course, there is unlikely to happen for months. So it's not clear what the timeframe will be for that one. Jennifer and I are working on with Council argument on some housekeeping type updates to the ordinance, just to clean up some language and provisions, pieces out of the rewrite and so forth. And I do plan on, I have spoken to a counselor about sponsoring a change for Plum Island. I do think it's important for us to at least begin looking at, it'll be up to the planning board and council to decide what to do with it. Particularly the council, but I do think that we need to take a look at the zoning on Plum Island. For folks who've been seeing the type of construction going on out there, both in the town of Newbury and the city of Newport given the water and sewer issues out there, the continued erosion issues that are discussed all the time, rising sea levels and some public meetings that'll be going on in the coming months based on a state grant to the town of Newbury to work or their portion of the island and ours on a study out there. You're going to see some public meetings happening to talk about how sea level rises can infect the affect the island moving forward. But bottom line is, I think we need to consider changing the zoning ordinance to limit future expansions or growth on the island. It's one thing to, you know, we discussed it years ago. City officials discussed it years ago prior to my time here in various different capacities, but it seems to me that the current zoning and the current permitting that's happening out there is inconsistent with the original purposes that were discussed with state agencies and between the two towns and so forth, even the purpose statements of our own Plum Island overlay district seems to conflict with some of the expansion that's happening out there. So that's one area that, you know, putting aside any other housekeeping things or pieces from the rewrite that haven't already been, you know, brought forward to the council. That's one that I think that we need to take a serious look at because it does have a significant significant long term impact on the city compared to some other things, you know, design review and different areas of the city is important, but if we have continued expansion in an area that's hazard prone, that's something we need to address, you know, sooner rather than later. So so we'll see some housekeeping things and some rewrite elements. One of the things that Jennifer and I and Caitlin are in agreement on is that we need to basically take some of the rewrite components and bring them out, even if they are recommendations from the staff and or the planning board directly as opposed to waiting for certain counselors to sponsor items. What we found is that we're somewhat at the whims of whether a counselor's willing to sponsor something. So to the extent that we're unable to find sponsors for particular elements, including from the rewrite, we did talk to Counselor Agnew about possibly sponsoring the framework of that. He had declined to do that because of the amount of pagination and adjustment that would be required of the consultant who hosts our online zoning. So while we weren't necessarily in agreement that that was the right priority for the reason for backing away from that. We understood that the framework is not something we're going to address immediately, so that's why we're trying to address with some of the housekeeping pieces of that rewrite, following the existing structure of the ordinance. And like I said, the Plum Island piece is a separate one, but I think it's a big policy, you know, change. I think that needs to be addressed, and so that should be pulled out separately. So you'll see some things coming forward next year. We'll have to defer to the council on how they want to handle things for public meetings, you know, given everything's happening online with the pandemic. But I think we do need to proceed with some of these changes to the extent the council has the bandwidth thing interest in it. I know licenses and permits for short term rentals may be on hold. But hopefully some of these other items can be brought forward to deal with them. And like I said, if the office is unable to get sponsorship for certain amendments that we think are important, we will submit those as communications to the planning board and city council for consideration. You know, again, the drafts, but but we are going to be recommending changes as opposed to waiting for to see whether or not there are specific council sponsors, because that might be doing it the wrong way around, you know, we it's not, it's not improper for planning professionals to recommend changes where we see them to be needed and to not wait months on end to try to see if we can get sponsorship and so forth. So so we'll continue to seek sponsorship of various amendments, but if we're unable to secure those, we will at least try to communicate those drafts to the city council and the planning board for consideration so that you can then decide whether or not you you think and the council can decide whether or not it's worth mending the ordinance to address those concerns that we've we've found.
So in that, separate from that, but related. I understand that Counselor Shand would be open to sponsoring the amended section 6C. So that seems like it could go forward as soon as we can get her up to speed on it. So why are we not moving on that one?
Yep, I know, that's just everybody's bandwidth has been limited right now. So I will circle back with Heather and find out if she, there's a suitable time that she has before the holiday or in between the holidays to meet with us again, but it's just been hard to pin down everybody in terms of timing because there's so much going on and people's schedules are somewhat limited. So we'll all circle back with Heather tomorrow and let you and Rick know. I think that was our core group on that. We'll we'll confirm that.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions about zoning amendments or anything else that might be going on that Andy could respond to? Okay. I don't have anything. I guess that's it. Shall we have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion.
Move.
Okay, I've got Leah first, and I think it was Tanya is the was backing her up.
So you want my backer up?
Okay, so you do the second, okay?
Okay.
Great. This is easy. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, we are officially adjourned.
Happy holidays, happy new year all.
Thank you.
See you in January officially, hopefully unofficially plowing the streets or shoveling the streets or whatever we're going to be doing the next two days. Take care and be well. Well, and we'll see you in January.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Bye. Night.
Good night.